Not too bad. So if we, if we're speaking.
In that generalized direction?
Yeah. Yeah. So you can see kind of the, the bar going up and down and.
Okay.
Musics. The music's about halfway, so we just have to.
Alright.
Uh, I really appreciate you doing this. Um, you should, you're actually my first, uh, interview for somebody in office. So, uh, I'm sorry, or congratulations, whichever way, whichever way that goes. Um, so Allendale Board of Commissioners, uh, you guys are kind of in charge of how Ottawa, yes. Excuse me.
Allendale is just one other district.
Yep.
There's, there's eleven districts.
Yep.
So there's eleven commissioners.
Yep. And ours is, uh, Greg DeYoung?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I'm hoping to talk to him.
I'm sure you see the signs.
Yes, yes, I do. So, uh, yeah, so, uh, they're responsible for, um, uh, a lot of the funding, you know, coming in, going out.
We are service providers.
Okay.
So what we do is we don't make laws.
Mm-hmm.
We don't set policies and stuff like that. We provide services to the people of Ottawa County.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so a service would be our Sheriff's Department, uh, community mental health. I happen to chair the community mental health board. That's my responsibility. Um, and, you know, I'm really proud of that because that's a vulnerable population. If someone that has some sort of mental illness, or they have a physical, um, problem, maybe autistic, autism or something like that, that's a vulnerable population. So we gotta take care of those people. Uh, and make sure that they're, uh, provided for and that they, you know, just don't sit and rock back and forth if they have a, um, an activity, they go someplace, maybe, you know, like Camp Optimist or, uh, Eamon Park over here. Uh, they got programming, some different things for them to become involved in. So that's one of the things. Um, another services would be the Brain Board, uh, Plaid Board, uh, the Parks, um, Clerk's Office. Uh, you know, there's just a variety of services that, uh, you know, nine-one-one dispatch, you know, uh, being the Chair of the Board and responsible for the emergency management team. So when things were happening in Grand Rapids, uh, with, with the death of the, the gentleman that the officer shot, um, we had eighty-six officers ready to be dispatched from Ottawa County to help out Kent County and Grand Rapids, along with our armored vehicle and our drones and all that. And luckily it, it, it turned out, uh, well, we didn't have to send anybody. But that's part of being the Chair along with the County Administrator and the Sheriff to make those decisions. Another one would be, you know, like ice jams on the Grand River underneath the sixty-eighth Bridge. Uh, we have to determine how we're gonna evacuate people out of there, you know, if all of a sudden the flooding happened. So that's part of, uh, uh, part of that whole, you know, service delivery.
Okay.
Um, your legislators, you know, your senators and legislators for the, state of Michigan are the ones that make laws.
Yes.
Uh, not us.
Yes, I represent the other side.
So this whole group of folks called Ottawa Impact came about because they were upset about the mask mandates.
Yeah.
It's hard to try to explain to a lot of people, we didn't have the authority or the control, uh, to fire the Health Director unless the Health Director, Lisa Stepansky, was doing something egregious or something illegal. Um, the mandates came down from the Department, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services by what they call, you know, a public health order. It's in the public health code. And the only way you can change the public health code, once again, is through legislation.
Okay.
So we didn't have a pandemic in a hundred and six years. And by the way, we never lost one kid in this county. There are other counties that did lose some children, but not in this county. So you were following the law. Because that's what you gotta do. You gotta follow the law. You can't deviate. No, maybe I don't wanna wear a seatbelt. Maybe we shouldn't have, uh, airbags and things like that. But that's the law. So you follow the law. So one of these, um, schools called Libertas School, they decided not to follow the law and the mask mandates. They just kind of did their own rogue thing. And we sent them multiple, multiple, um, letters, visited them, said, hey, you've got to follow this, you know, the, the, the Health Department's mandate, you know, which is set from the state to the public health code down. They disregarded, so we wound up shutting them down for, you know, a week, week and a half. And, uh, the founder of this group called Ottawa Impact, Joe Moss, just happened to be the treasurer at that school. And decided that, you know, he wants to get rid of all the commissioners. Um, and so had, that's how this whole thing started. Now, if we would've had a vaccine, quick enough, you know, up to speed, we probably wouldn't have needed the, the masks as long. Uh, but I'm sure your school required masks, Grand Valley State University. And, you know, I wasn't crazy about wearing masks. Uh, but, you know, that's what the expectation was. That's what the, you know, law was. And I wasn't just doing it just for me. I was doing it for others also. Uh, so that's how that whole, that whole thing started, this whole group started. And now it's, you know, it's about freedom and liberty. Well, shit, I'm for freedom and liberty. Um, you know, I, I believe in the Second Amendment. I believe in the Fourteenth Amendment. I got plenty of guns. I have guns. I hunt. I target practice. Uh, but, you know, that's, that's not what county government does. Uh, you know, as I said, and I'll go back to it, we provide, you know, a service. Uh, and so, usually, in order to become a county commissioner, you have some sort of experience. Uh, these people have no experience whatsoever. Uh, I've been on zoning boards. I've been on planning commissions. I was a Deputy Court Administrator for the Seventeenth Circuit Court in Kent County for thirty-three years. I ran the hundred-bed detention facility. I was charged with taking care of one hundred kids. Making sure that they're safe and that they're provided for and they're secure. Because that was my, my job. Uh, I was a Township Trustee, you know, for, uh, four years. Uh, and I've been a county commissioner for ten years. I'm in my tenth year. So I have a wealth of knowledge. I have a wealth of experience. Uh, this, this Ottawa Impact people, they have no experience. No leadership skills. They're just running on that issue of mask mandates.
So, uh, just a question, like hypothetically, um, say, uh, the County Commissioner Board said, you know, I don't, so, so I understand, like, there's health, health codes and, uh, different regulations. Um, if they had, had said, you know, if, say, the Health Department was still requiring mask mandates, um, and it, you know, they go off into, you know, a couple of years of it, um, is there a point where you would've, where you or the County Commissioner Board, the Board of Commissioners would've said, uh, no, enough is enough? Like, what is, what does that look like to say, this is tyranny. This is going too fast?
Said, once we have a vaccine, then we can start weaning ourselves off from the masks. And we ultimately got vaccines. Uh, I'm not saying that everybody has to get a vaccine. That's a personal choice. If you wanna get a vaccine, you can. If you don't, you don't. I just happen to have two vaccines and the two boosters. Because I'm with people all the time. Uh, and I'm also with elderly people. But if someone doesn't wanna have it, that's their choice. Um, in January of this year, the Omicron, that other little variant dude was starting to just kind of pop up a little bit. And our County Administrator, John Shea, um, had a meeting with his, um, department heads. And we have about twelve-hundred employees. He had a meeting with our department heads, and eighty percent of department heads in January were recommending to him that, hey, um, we need to start masking up inside our county facilities again. And, you know, I sat down with, since I'm a chair, I sat down with John and I said, we're not gonna do that. I mean, we've been down that road. We've got the vaccines, you know, starting to get, you know, take, take hold. I said, we're not gonna mask up again. Not gonna do it. And, you know, I had the support of my other board members. Uh, and so we didn't do it. We didn't do it. So I, I guess that's to answer your question. You have to look at, you know, each individual time and sequence of what's happening right then and there to make that call. Uh, and that was, that was, you know, what we decided then, that, you know, there wasn't a mandate to, you know, from, from the state then that had gone away. Uh, and in fact, we're looking in the rearview mirror now. Uh, some people say, well, it might come back, you know, this fall. It may, it may not. But we at least, at least we got something that we didn't have before. We got the, you know, the vaccines. We know how to go through it, how to navigate this much better. Uh, so, you know, it's, uh, you know, that's just kind of, you know, that in a nutshell.
Yeah.
You know, but, uh, one, one thing that this, uh, this organization, to me, they're a very scary group. Uh, they're getting all their money from outside of the state. Um, their buddies are, you know, the, the one living brother or the cult brother. Uh, they got somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and sixty, you know, thousand dollars to just run against all of us. Um, when I met with Joe Moss in December, first of all, he, I don't know why he felt that he needed to tell me that he was carrying it. Doesn't matter to me whether he's carrying it or not. But at the end of our conversation, which took about an hour and a half, uh, he said, you know, if I get in, if we get in, uh, the first thing that we're gonna do is we're gonna get rid of that DENI office. There's no reason why Ottawa County needs any sort of, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion office.
Okay.
And I said, well, really, Joe? Seriously? So, so it's, it's only, you know, people that look like me can, can live here in Ottawa County? I mean, you know, I'm agriculture community. If you go to Hanky's Farm, he milks, um, five-thousand-five-hundred cows. And you go in there and you see all Latinos. You see all Mexicans working on the machines. Who's gonna pick the asparagus? Who's gonna take care of the, the, uh, the, the trees that grow the apples and the peaches and the cherries? We don't do that. So our motto here is where you belong. That's what Ottawa County is, where you belong. So to me, that means where everybody belongs. It doesn't matter whether you're an Asian, or you're African-American, or you're Latino. Uh, as long as you're producing and for the betterment, for the economy of Ottawa County, that's what's important. It doesn't matter what color you are. Uh, some people have said, I don't know if it's true or not, but some people are starting to think that, that this Ottawa Impact is a very racist group.
So you're alleging actually that to get rid of the Department of Inclusion and Equity would be a racist thing to do? Or that Joe Moss is, uh, averse to anybody other than white people? Okay?
He said himself to me that you need to get rid of that DENI office.
Okay.
He said that to me personally. Whether this is a racist group or not, I don't know. It's just what people are starting to talk about. Uh, so that may or may not be true. I'm not saying they are. I'm just saying what others have shared with me, that they believe that is. But I can say that he doesn't want the DENI office.
Okay. I think, uh, that's something that, you know, a lot of people can sympathize with. We've had, uh, I mean, I'm sure you've seen a lot of the equity and diversity and inclusion offices that they push critical race theory. They push, um, a lot of different leftist, okay, that's fair. Um, so.
We don't push, uh, critical race theory. We don't push GARE. Uh, we.
You're not associated with GARE?
There are links that our DENI offices has used certain things. Uh, an example would be implicit bias. Have you heard of implicit bias?
Yeah, I've taken some training.
Okay. Uh, but it's a toolbox. First of all, it's only a department, a director and a part-time secretary. So it's not like a booming, booming department. Uh, but we'll use different tools in the toolbox. So if you've got a project to do, you may wanna hammer, you may wanna screw, you know, you might screwdriver. We'll take bits and pieces, what we believe, um, can help out. Our end goal is to make sure that if you've got a, uh, if you've got a racetrack like this, and here's the starting gate, we want everybody to start off at the same place. We don't want people starting fifty yards over here and a hundred yards back. We want everybody to at least have a fair shot at starting off at the same starting gate.
How much, how much, uh, does Ottawa County spend? I had heard two hundred dollars in a year on our diversity of equity and inclusions office. Uh, is that right?
The neighborhood of that, yeah. Um, for the first three years, it's been going for about three and a half years. We didn't just kind of come up with, you know, having this office. The big corporations in this county, Shea Corporation, Gentex, Hayworth, all, you know, chambers, foundations, they all came to the county and said, you guys really need to put together, um, you know, a DENI office. Because companies demand that they have these offices. Shea Corporation is all over the world. Uh, because they do the folding of the metal and, and, and different things. It's out of Grand Haven. Um, they're in Germany, they're in Japan, they're in, in Mexico. Uh, and when they're dealing with these, and, and their companies are in those locations too. Those folks in these different locations in, in the world, that's one of the first things they ask. Do you have a DENI office? That's important to their company, their folks and their employees. Young people, um, want a welcoming, diverse workforce. There's strength in diversity. It's not a weakness. It's a strength. Um, I would, you know, as a, as a, as a Catholic, um, I do the ministering of the Eucharist. I do the, uh, uh, the Lecter. I'm a Lecter in my church. Um, I go to Saint Mary's down on First and Broadway. And it was probably about fifteen years ago, our population and our, and our membership was going down and down and down. And we had this choice to make. Either we invite, uh, folks that maybe they don't look like us. Maybe they're a Latino population. Maybe we'll have a Spanish mass. And so we welcomed them in to the church. And so we have, it's a vibrant church again. And we put on festivals together. Uh, we did things together. And the church right down the street, Saint James, they were a little pinched. They, uh, weren't quite so welcoming. And so they just had their last mass, um, a month ago. Because they don't have the numbers to keep feeding that church. Because it costs a lot of money to keep a church going. So, and it, and basically the Latina, uh, pop, Latino population is primarily Catholic. And so, and they do things a little bit different. So they may not put X amount of twenty dollars in the envelope, but when it comes time for the festival, they donate all the food. They donate all the manpower. Uh, and so therefore they, they contribute. And so that's what I mean by strength in numbers. Uh.
So that seems more of, uh, power in, um, power in working together rather than diversity per se?
Well, not everybody looks the same.
That's true.
They're, they're, you definitely have a diverse, um, group of folks.
Okay.
No.
So I have another question for you. Um, it's been alleged that, uh, uh, you, you say you're, you've taken things from GARE that you, uh, like, um, there's another, uh, a couple other, um, actually, I've got.
Well, we don't support critical race theory.
Okay.
Uh, whatsoever. Um.
So Race Forward, that's another, uh, uh, organization that's been said that Ottawa County has partnered with. Is that true or?
No.
No, not at all? Okay.
This group, um, if you get on, look at our, um, Ottawa County website and, um, our Administrator's Digest. Remember that Administrator's Digest, he just put it out. Uh,
Ottawa, um, see myodawa.org?
So it's the Administrator's Digest, he just put it out on Thursday.
Okay.
And he speaks to those misconceptions. He speaks to those misconceptions.
Is it, uh, under departments?
Administrator's Digest, you have to, you have to, um, subscribe to it. Right now it goes out to thirty-two or thirty-three thousand people.
Okay.
But he'll speak to, to the board meeting, he spoke to it. So if you listen to the, uh, YouTube today at the board meeting, it's right at the end of our meeting and he'll speak to those, those misconceptions.
So, yeah, we'll be watching that.
Just like we've been accused that we're, you know, pro-abortion.
Mm-hmm.
I've never been pro, pro-abortion. In fact, I've been endorsed by Right to Life. Uh, and I would be quite a hypocrite going to my church and, and giving out the, uh, the Eucharist and, and lecturing. Um, because the Catholic Church is definitely, uh, pro-life.
Yeah.
I've always been pro-life, my whole life.
Okay.
Uh, this other thing, you know, they're, they're, they say that they're vetted. There are no more vetted Republicans than a man of his own. The only vetting that it is, is Joe Moss has a contract that each one of the candidates has to sign. I think individually, I'm not gonna sign something that Joe Moss puts together and say, well, in order to be vetted by me and get the money, these people wouldn't be running if they weren't getting outside money. They wouldn't.
So do you, uh, obviously.
You're vetted with your own contract.
Yeah.
My contract is with my constituents, with my people. That's who I, I work for.
Mm-hmm. So we, um, there have been claims that, uh, and I, actually, I am an ex-Republican because the Republican Party has just been so, it seems like they're, they don't get things done. Um, so I would call myself more of a center or, uh, unaffiliated right now. Uh, and I know that's been a claim. Okay. But I know that's been a claim that the Republicans are, um, so, so the problem, I think, that, that people see is Republicans are willing to move for Democrats, but Democrats are not willing to move for Republicans. So the Republicans keep on kind of inching their way over. Um, that the left kind of gets, uh, you know, through the diversity of an equity, equity and inclusions office. They get their agenda kind of pushed into these counties. Um, what, uh, do you see that problem with Republicans at all higher up? Or do you see it around the country anywhere? Um, that you would say?
Putting record and, and, and you can easily see.
Yeah.
It's all been Republican.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but in order to get, like what you said, in order to get some things done, uh, you, you do have to work with, with others. Uh, now, this is strange, strange times.
Yeah.
Um, and you know, the Biden is pretty worthless. Uh, I don't like any of his policies. Kamala is, is worse than his. Um, I did vote for Trump. Um, but he could've won that damn election if he would've just shut up. He just wouldn't shut up. And so what's happened is he's, he's, he has divided the country even more than it was divided before. Uh, and, and it's like locusts that have just been hanging out, waiting for ten, fifteen years to come out of the ground. And they've come out of the ground. That's, that's my belief. And that they don't, um, you know, I mean, if you, if you, I don't know where you're at as far as, but storming the, the Capitol Building, uh, you know, and the insurrection on January the sixth.
Say it was an insurrection. You thought that. Okay, that's fair.
Right. I think we can do better than, you know, storming the Capitol Building. I think that's, uh, you know, all that problem boy bullshit. I'm not down with that at all. Not at all. Um, now, you know, some of their, some of their general ALC, I can't stand her. She drives me absolutely up a wall. Um, and the one we have in Minnesota, the one we have in the Detroit area, uh, yeah, they're bad. They're bad for our country. Um, but, um, you know, you know, we talk about parental rights. I'd like to know if my kids were still in school. I'd like to know what the curriculum would be and what's going on. But that is the school board. Uh, we don't have anything to do with, um, teaching the critical race theory. Now, I'm, I'm totally against it. You're not gonna be telling me that I have to sacrifice what happened to, to, you know, to folks and blame me now and, and, you know, maybe I should contribute four thousand dollars a year, you know, to make it better. No, that's, that's stupid think. But, uh, we got, we gotta, you know, we're not gonna get beyond anything if we don't, you know, come together. It used to be now like, when I was in, uh, uh, when I went to Michigan State, I campaigned for Jerry Ford. Remember Gerald Ford? You might be a little young for Gerald Ford.
I don't remember him, but I, I.
But, but he was a pretty decent president. He took over for, uh, um, Tricky Dick Nixon. And, but he, he was a pretty decent, uh, legislator, Speaker of the House and, and also the, but I remember going around and putting stickers on the doors and handing out pamphlets for Ford and Dole campaign down at Michigan State back in seventy-seven. So that's how far I go back as far as being a Republican. Uh, but, uh, yeah, I'm just trying to look at some of the. So anyway.
So I, I.
With, with the, uh, we got three opinions on the mask.
Okay.
We got first our internal corporate counsel, Doug Van Nessen. And then we reached out to Attorney General Mike Cox, got his opinion. And he said, no, you can't fire the Health Director unless she does, unless she does something, uh, illegal. And then Judge Holsing, Circuit Court Judge, ruled in favor of us. When in fact, um, you know, we were sued by Ottawa Impact. Uh, and he ruled in favor. Now it's at the, the appellate level. Uh, so.
They're continuing this lawsuit as. Okay.
To me, the group is, is a scary group.
Okay.
You'll see, i-if they get in this county, first of all, we have, we're, we're, we're one of the fastest growing counties in the whole state of Michigan. Everybody wants to come here. Why? Because we're fiscally responsible. We watch our pennies. We have a triple-A bond rating. So what is the triple-A bond rating, I ask you?
Association of, uh.
It has all to do with interest rates. So we just, we're gonna break ground. We just broke ground.
What is triple-A? What is that saying? It is association of something.
Yeah, there's three different types of, of bond ratings. And so basically Ottawa County has such good credit that they can go out and get bonds for the new Justice Center that we just broke ground on, on, on Thursday, a thirty-two million dollar project, and they can get the best interest rate possible. Where other counties that are not economically strong, that maybe have a B bond rating or C-plus bond rating, their interest rate to, to, you know, get those bonds to fund that project is gonna be way higher.
Okay.
We got fifty-seven million dollars from the ARPA Fund. We haven't spent any yet. Ottawa County's pissed it away just like that. But we wanna make sure through, you know, a committee that we've put together of multiple different stakeholders, as well as sending out a survey to the, uh, to the constituents, that if, when we spend that fifty-seven million, that in ten or fifteen years, it's still working. that in ten or fifteen years, it's still working. It's gotta be sustainable, long-lasting, uh, not just to, you know, a little cotton candy and ice cream cone and melts, you know, in a year, if you know what I mean, analogy-wise, so. Um, I'm just trying to think of some other stuff here that might be, might be, uh, of, of interest, interest to you.
Yeah.
So, uh, see what happens is the commissioners are made up a lot of talented individuals. So my expertise would probably be, you know, leadership, but also the courts, because that was my, my career.
Yeah.
But besides the courts, I've been on the planning commission for Thomas Township for twenty-nine years. So site plan reviews, you know, uh, different things to do with, you know, runoff and water and recharge of our aquifers and that, that's my area. So Greg DeYoung, he's been a realtor, uh, not only a corporate, but, you know, residential, but, uh, uh, corporate realtor. So if we go out and we purchase, by the way, we've got the best park system in the whole state of Michigan also. You've been to some of them.
I've been to some of the parks.
Bad, aren't they?
No, they're remote.
So he would know purchasing of land. So the Explorers Trail, that's gonna go from Millennium Park all the way up to the Boardwalk. Here's an example. I worked on Peter Vissluss's campaign. He was a judge in Granville and for Walker. His dad was Phil Vissluss. Phil Vissluss was my boss for a period of time when I worked at, at the court, in the seventeenth Circuit Court, he was the court director. Well, he's married to Joyce Vissluss, his wife, but Joyce is the sister of Bea Ideman. Bea Ideman is the heir to the Steelcase Foundation. So when it came time to look for donors, we went to Peter Seki. I know Peter Seki's passed away now, but I also went to Bea Ideman and said, would you be interested in donating? That suspension bridge, Grand Ravines Park, most of that is all her money. So that, that relationship and that collaboration, that connection, um, is what works. And then she just donated, she just passed away, since just donated a whole bunch of money for, um, the place in Grand Haven and Spring Lake, um, where they're gonna have little turrets and camping things and different things. Uh, it's called Ottawa Sands. She donated millions and millions of dollars to that. But you gotta, you know, I mean, I've lived here all my life. Uh, and I'm still living right now on the family farm. That my, my father was a farmer and his grandparents were a farm. So I'm invested into my, into my community. I certainly don't do it for the money. I do it because I want a strong, vibrant economy. Uh, work, uh, work a lot with, you know, Lakeshore Advantage and making sure that, um, you know, affordable housing. People, well, what do you need affordable housing? Well, we need workers. And if you were, you know, a worker that maybe would go into gentex or something like that, a starting worker, maybe twenty dollars an hour, twenty-four dollars an hour, if you had a family of four, what kind of a home can you build? Can you afford a five hundred or a seven hundred thousand dollar in a home? No, you have to have some sort of affordable housing for, you know, starter homes. And builders don't wanna build starter homes anymore because they don't get enough profit. They don't wanna build a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar home. They want it because there's more profit margin at a five hundred or a seven hundred thousand dollar home. But these companies need bodies. They're having a hard time filling the, filling the shoes of the, of the workers there.
Was that a recent problem? Cause I've heard of it since, uh. Beginning of twenty-twenty where there's just, people can't find workers and that's all over the place. Um, so you, it.
It's been, it's been, uh, something that needs to be addressed.
Okay. Now.
Kilpatrick is, uh, Housing Next, he's the director of Housing Next and, uh, you know, United Way has, you know, cited it as a problem. The manufacturing companies have cited it as a continuous problem. Uh, but just not affordable housing. When you, when you move into an area, you gotta have safety. You gotta feel safe. We got a good, good sheriff's department. Uh, that's one of our biggest departments. Uh, so, you know, I, I meet with Steve Kempner, the sheriff, you know, at least on a weekly basis. Uh, you know, and so good schools is the next thing.
Yeah.
And, and parks. Uh, those are, those are the things that people, when you move in, it's gotta be a welcoming community. Uh, people, you know, gotta feel that, you know, yeah, okay, they invited me to the table, but that was just to fill a slot. Did I get to talk at the table, you know, about issues and, and did I get to contribute? Or was I just invited to the table? You, you, you understand?
Um, a little bit.
Okay.
I do have a question. About like, so you guys, you said you've been looking at affordable housing for about ten years now. Um, what would that look like? So let me give you an example. There's, there's affordable housing like in Muskegon Heights, they've got a bunch of, you know, uh, maybe single-family homes stacked up on top of each other and that place is just awful. I've been threatened with a gun there. I've been, um, you know, I've, I've delivered pizza there and I've had guys just trying to like walk up to me and take my pizza. Um, so there's that kind of, uh, model where it's just like a bunch of houses shoved together. It seems like what you're talking about is more like, uh, starter homes on their own property. Is that what you?
They'd, they'd be, I mean, they, they're not rental units, they'd, they'd be ownership. So you gotta have skin in the game.
Yeah.
In order to, uh, in order to make it work. We're also looking at some senior housing.
Okay.
Uh, because, well, people like me are getting older and, you know, they just, they're, they're not quite to the nursing home area or not quite to the, let's say, uh, you know, heavy assisted living. Uh, they can still do some things on their own, but they really can't afford heavy, heavy duty things. But they, some people need to kind of watch over them a little bit, kind of a little community of senior living where there's, there's an environment where they feel safe and there's some people that can provide, uh, some, you know, care for them on occasions and different things. So we're looking at that. Um, but, you know, the, the starter homes, um, still are innate. Um, whether it's model cities where you could, you could do it, you know, differently where, uh, you would have, you know, some storefronts down below or in some living quarters up above, uh, just, you know, an atmosphere where perhaps they, you know, there's good transportation, they can get, you know, to and from work, uh, there's some good childcare and availability, um, some things that, you know, and, and the companies need to have skin in the game too. It can't be just all on the, on the county's shoulders.
Do they contribute anything to this?
Well, for the first three and a half years, they contributed to the DE, DE and I office. They paid for it entirely. And then, uh, uh, because there's the little c and the big C. So the little c is the county and we wanted to have a DE and I office for, you know, county employees, twelve hundred employees. Then there's the big C where you, you reach out more and work with, in collaboration with, with companies and townships, um, chambers and, and things like that. So this is kind of a two-fold, uh, process, but it's now on us for, uh, supporting that as far as that, that office goes.
Yeah. So just, I'm, I'm hammering this DEI office because I've seen a lot of scary ones. Um, so have you seen, it's been up and running for three years. What impact has you, have you seen that it has on our community?
You asked the Latino population. Uh, you know, they came and they asked, why is it that none of our, you know, Latino or Mexican or Asians, why, why is it that they only go to certain parks? Well, that's because they didn't feel really welcome at other parks. But, you know, through some techniques that the Parks Department has tried and worked with, uh, they're starting to feel a little bit more open and more, uh, comfortable in, in some of the park locations.
And what, 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 what did that, like what made them feel uncomfortable and what did we do to fix that?
I think the, um, some training, work is to have. And some, some signage and working side by side. So when the, when they have a festival in Grand Haven, the Hispanic Festival that they have in Grand Haven, you know, mariachis and good food and music and all that sort of stuff, um, what do some of the commissioners do? We go and serve food and pour beer along with the, the festival of people, uh, working once again together. So they say, oh, commissioners are interested in our festival. Well, how nice. That's cool. Uh, rather than say, oh, no, now that's their festival.
Yeah. If there's tacos, I'm in.
But that would be, you know, as a, a little bit of an example.
Okay.
You have to reach out. Um, I have, when I worked for the courts and when I ran the, um, I was a probation officer when I ran the detention facility, was I the superintendent there? Um, eighty percent of the kids that came into our detention facility were African-American. Well, do you think I'm gonna hire a hundred percent white guys? No. I have to hire some, some folks that when the kids are there, the eighty percent African-Americans, they kind of look like them. You know, you know, make them feel a little bit more comfortable about this. It's already bad enough that they're not sleeping in their own homes sometimes and they're taken away from their parents. They did wrong. Uh, but it's a little helpful to have somebody that looks like them. When I would go out, South Division, Logan Street, Bemis, all in the inner city, I treated the kids fairly. I was strict, but I was fair. And I never felt at all threatened, at all. Um, so that's, you know, that's just, uh, you know, just have to be able to, uh, get along with, with everybody and respect everybody with dignity and respect. And if, if I don't look like you, um, you and I are different. Um, you're diverse, I'm diverse, but we're, we're, okay, we might be both Caucasian, but you've got a beard, I don't, but I used to have a beard. Uh, and maybe I think one way or think another way, maybe I, you know, like NASCAR, maybe you like golf. That's diverse. That's different. You know, I think we make too much of a, a deal of this diversity thing. Uh, I, I really do. I think it's, it's kind of like, really? Um, if you look at us, uh, if we're sick, we all got, we're all, we all got the same, you know, I mean, a heart is a heart and bones are bones and blood disease is blood disease and cancer is cancer. I think it's gonna affect us all the same way because we're humans.
Yeah.
And we're Americans. We live here in America. Uh, so that's what I meant when I first started that, you know, is diversity is, can be strength.
Now, I do have something that I really want to talk to you about.
Yeah.
Um, so there was a lady at the last county commissioners meeting, not this one, last one, spoke at the beginning, um, had some points that she wanted to, uh, get into the jails and I think she, she had like some training, training points, uh, that she wanted done. It was a lady from Grand Haven, uh, uh, I think Robinson Township. Uh, do you remember her? She spoke right at the very beginning, gave, uh, public comment, yeah.
Well, you'd have to jiggle my brain a little bit to see if I could draw her back as to what her points were.
She talked about, um, having training for, uh, for, uh, corrections to deal with LGBTQ, uh, people, um, training for how to deal with LGBTQ, people coming in, um, allowing people to use their assigned or their chosen genders to determine, you know, where they go. Uh, is that, any of that ringing a bell?
Um, oh, ain't but, um, I have a neighbor across the street. Uh, and one of, one of his daughters, um, she had some, some difficulty trying to figure out who she was. Uh, I'm not gonna give any names, but she, she, uh, was, was gay lesbian, had a partner and then, uh, and she didn't wanna do that and went through a, a change to become a guy. And now she's gone through that change to become a guy, changed her name, all that, and now is with a guy, is, is gay. Kind of a flip. And, um, I had, I kept saying the wrong name because she changed her name to a he and so I got it right now, but it took a while. Uh, and, uh, I remember, you know, I held her when she was a little baby. Um, still a nice girl, still sweet or he. Um, it's not my way, that wouldn't be my gig. Um, but, you know, typically speaking, um, when God dealt with all sorts of folks, who did he reach out to? He, he, he reached out to the, to the gal, to the woman that was doing the prostitution that went with another man and they were gonna stone her to death and then he said, well, the one that, you know, um, you know, doesn't have any sin or doesn't do anything wrong, cast the first stone, everybody went away.
So I'm not talking about personal relationships. What I'm really talking about is policy. So, uh, is Ottawa, is Ottawa County, um, so say a man, uh, goes to prison, okay, says he's a woman.
Jail. We don't have prisons.
Man goes jail, says he's a woman. Uh, would Ottawa County ever consider putting him into the women's detention center?
Yeah, I don't think so. No. That ain't gonna work that way.
Okay.
No.
Cause that's, that's some of the things that she was saying, uh, or it sounded like she was saying.
Percent. I mean, there are some accommodations you gotta make, you know, like kosher foods or, or something along those lines, uh, and maybe some segregation. Uh, but no, we're not gonna put the, the guy that wants to be a gal in the girls. You know, no, no, absolutely no, that's craziness.
Okay.
And I would, I would think that the sheriff would, would be right along with that.
Okay.
I don't think that's happening, so.
In Ottawa County or at all?
Not at all.
Okay, okay, yeah, just wanted to make sure.
I don't know what's happening. All right, if you go out in California, probably.
You got some crazy people, yeah, you got some crazy counties.
I'm not.
Yeah, no, I'm not either. Um, so, um, does, I'm trying to, I, I had a, a direction I was going with this. Uh, oh, yeah, so, um, say, say, uh, some, some gay pride festival wanted to happen in Ottawa County. Um, do we have any of those currently? Gay pride parades or festivals or? Did that, okay. So, um, I've seen some festivals where men are cross-dressing, uh, walking around.
Go down to the Keys, Dean Marigo.
Yeah. Is, is that something that the, the Ottawa County Commission, Board of Commissioners has sway over? Do they give like license to that or does it just out of their hands or what?
That's not in our wheelhouse.
Okay.
Because, well, because if you have it in Grand Haven or you have it in the city of Holland, they have their own commission, their own city council.
That would be the city council that does that. Okay. Okay.
Now, I can tell you, if, if, if there's a run, we have the M two thirty run, uh, and we, we sponsor the run, uh, but that's just for general running people.
Right.
Uh, we're not.
Would you, would you ever as a, as a board of commissioner, consider sponsoring something that, okay?
We don't.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Not sponsored.
Okay.
I can say that. Absolutely not.
Do you think that there's a possibility that some commissioners would, um, consider it if, if, say, the, the situation ever came up?
Maybe one.
Maybe one?
Maybe one. We have one lone Democrat.
Okay.
Maybe. Uh, you'd have to ask him personally, but maybe.
Okay.
Not that sure.
Now, this is getting.
This is a conservative, neutral commissioner.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, that's a lot of what I've heard is that.
Conservative, neutral commissioners.
Okay.
Listen to it, I said, I, I think that everybody is, is, uh, pro-life here. And one commissioner said, well, I did not get to ask for the endorsement from, from Right to Life.
Okay.
But that's his business.
Yeah. Okay.
No problems with our one lonely Democrat whatsoever. Um, sometimes he challenges this and that and everything, but that's his job. He represents the city of Holland.
Okay.
So I represent District of West. So I represent District One. However, once you're a county commissioner, you're supposed to represent the entire county, not just your little piece. Now granted, the piece, you know, District Eleven is who voted for me.
Yeah.
Uh, but you're supposed to be making decisions. It doesn't matter whether you're a Democrat or an independent or a Republican. You're making decisions for the betterment and the whole totality of everybody. Not just one believer group. I don't necessarily think this particular group that's running against, you know, dinos has that feeling. I really don't.
Um, now, one more question that I did want to ask. Um, so with, with our, you know, equity and diversity and inclusion, I've got that wrong word, but, um, so, yeah, pretty close. Uh, so a lot of the, the programs that are running, I know I've heard about, that's, something I need. Um, so I've heard about like the teeth cleaning, um.
Miles of smiles.
That's the one.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, Miles of smiles and, uh?
And there's a, you know, vision.
Yeah.
In the school.
Okay. Now, um, as a.
Feed up right during the summer, we get a food program.
Okay.
For, you know, they just. It's not maybe a breakfast or a lunch and, and during the summertime, that isn't really happening.
Yeah.
So we want to make it least available to them. No one should go hungry.
Okay.
Regardless.
Now, is that something that, uh, is funded by the county or, cause I've heard, um, that there's.
County doesn't fund that, but it, it, it supports that and it, um, you know, sends out, you know, different things on its, on its Facebook page. Miles of smiles it is and the vision it is. So here's an example of the health department. Um, health department does a lot of good. Just got beat up over the doggone mask thing, but this place is, is checked twice a year. They come in here to make sure that, you know, the vents are clean and it's healthy food and that people are, you know, using, using gloves and thermometer and different things like that. They do that food trucks down at Trail Point. They'll do that at the little baseball game, someone chucking out hot dogs or at a, you know, one of the Mexican restaurants down here, Alsteca or whatever. So there's, there's a lot of good, good things that, um, a health department does to make sure and protect you, to make sure that everything is okay.
Okay. All right. Yeah, yeah, makes sense. So it, so you said, uh, just to clarify, it's, it's funded, uh, more of outside things fund, um, you know, Miles of smiles, but the county commissioners just?
Miles is a county program.
Okay. So you, you said.
Eat up and eat up.
Yeah. So that's outside funding?
Yes.
And then you guys would just endorse that?
Well, we would.
And spread the word about it.
Move it out, let people know where it is and what's taking place and stuff, just by posting it on our Facebook.
Okay.
Just like you, if you had a, a friend that was going to have a bowling party, you pay, post something on your Facebook, hey, well, I'm eating at Westgate for a bowling party.
Okay.
That doesn't mean I'm paying for your bowling.
Yeah. All right. Well, I think we've covered, uh, everything that I wanted to talk about.
I don't know what you were going to ask or what you were thinking about, so.
It was a lot of, you know, a lot of those lines I wanted to ask about. Because I've, I've looked at a lot of the, uh, you know, we can. So I've looked at a lot of the, um.